Welcome to the Board of Education's February 3, 2025 Work Session. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Wright.
Attention. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have many announcements tonight. It's very light. Just a reminder that the Tennessee Board, Tennessee School Board Association's Legislative and Legal Institute will be held February 10th and 11th in Franklin, Tennessee. I believe most of us have registered, but if you need to let Ms. Cote know of any changes, please do so as soon as possible. Are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, second by Mr. Triplett. All those in favor say aye. Aye? All right. Dr. Reiswick, do you have a report for us?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. I always think they're going to be short, but we have so many good things going on.
I was gonna say, last month was so long. Is this one?
I know. Well, I keep thinking it's not, and then it gets long. But that's just because our kids and our staff are doing such great stuff. So, want to start tonight by talking about an event that Tennessee Achieves hosted at West High School for us last Friday. It was a milestone for us. It was a goal that you all may remember two years ago, set out by our community where we were at Pellicippi then, to try to reach a 70% post-secondary experiences for our graduates by 2024, which, you know, that's 70% of a graduating class. That's pretty impressive, being enrolled. So, we met last week and had with community leaders at West High to give the information that we actually hit that goal, which is amazing when you think about that of a senior class. You roughly probably 4,300 kids in a senior class that either went on to enroll into college, enroll into like a TCAD or a post-secondary, or through industry certifications, earn different things like that too, or join the military. So, a lot of things that we're looking at there. What that tells us is that our kids aren't just prepared to graduate, but prepared for life after high school, and they demonstrated that while they were here. So, over the last two years, we've taken many intentional steps at KCS to ensure our students are prepared in what comes after they get their diploma. We do that through, we'll talk a lot about our three Es. Our first being enrollment. You all know that was a very intentional establishment of the 865 academies at all 14 of our high schools where they are now, our traditional high schools. We really encourage you, what does that look like? How do you demonstrate that you're ready for enrollment while you're in high school? For us, that's taking advanced placement courses, IB courses, or dual enrollment courses. While we were there, Dr. Wise, Anthony Wise from Pellicippi, gave a great stat, I thought that was, that was amazing, because this was a conversation we had coming out of COVID with them, and he's always been a great partner of ours. They left all of their catalog open to us so that our students could take dual enrollment remotely. And now, we now are now 24% of their enrollment, our students taking those courses. I know firsthand, I got to tell this story, my daughter's a freshman, and I remember having the conversation before she went to college and saying, you know, okay, Em, when you do that, there's really just a midterm, and there's a final score. And she was like, Dad, I already passed seven college classes before I graduated. I got this. And she did. I mean, she's totally fine. Had a great first semester. So, I think that's just the power of what this means for our kids to be able to do that. We also recognize in our students as enlisting. I think we had 95 of those students from the last graduating class. And for us, you know, it doesn't just mean joining the military for no reason. We know, I know some folks that have that experience. That allows them the chance to have those training techniques, also lets them, which turns into civilian jobs for them. Also, things like the GI Bill, that's a great thing. I know as an Army brat myself, my dad took advantage of that, changed my family's trajectory as far as that went. Very important. Nine of our schools currently have junior ROTC programs. Very proud of that and very proud of those opportunities for those students. Employment is the third E for us after enlist, and we do have CEO Champion Board. We were able to go to South Oil High School last week and see the great things that Dr. Carr and his team are doing there. Some incredible robotics and fabrication labs that are there for our students to be able to use. So, really, really excited about that as our students earn industry certifications as well. So, just want to say thank you to Tennessee Achieves, the organization that's worked a lot with us. Chrissy Delahondre, if you know her, Randy Boyd are big parts of that. They were there as well, just to be able to recognize our kids. And so, I think the end was great. Randy Boyd stood up, and our community now has a new goal of looking forward to advance 865. We're challenged by 2028 to move that number to 80%, and we said challenge accepted. So, we're going to get there for our students. So, that was a great event. Also, want to take it a second and just talk about something new. You know, communication is always very important for us to get our families and our community involved. Last month, we launched a new endeavor called Education Blueprint, which is a podcast. Never thought I'd do a podcast, but doing a podcast, which is really great. It's really aimed at trying to simplify education, kind of let people behind the curtain. Prentice Elliott, you'll probably see him tonight coming around in a second, is the co-host for that. We opened with Todd Howes, our first guest, and talking about snow days and what makes snow days. This Wednesday, we have a second one that will drop with Mike Odom, talking about the connections of education to the economics of Knoxville and Knox County, talking about his plan, the 2030 Protocol that they have for future jobs. Again, I believe that if people understand, they'll join the mission. And so, this is just another way for us to be able to go deeper. And then, actually, our third one we've already recorded with Howard and Hill. That was a very good time for us to have him in studio as well. So, really looking forward to that. So, if you have a chance to share that with people, I think it's a great way for them to know a little more about our school system as well and about educational issues facing students today. Last two things, Strategic Budgeting Plan. Last, in last month's update, I shared the budget planning process for next year is already underway. This process is essential for our work as we align our resources to our strategic priorities. Want to extend my gratitude to the teachers and families who recently participated in our focus groups through the regional teacher and family councils. I think we're finally getting that right. It's been really good to be able to have those councils operate, and Joe and his team and Ron go out and really get some input into those as well as the survey. So, the perspectives of our families and community are key to guiding our work and sustaining our commitment to student success. Looking ahead, we'll begin hosting community meetings in March and April. We'll share updates as soon as we get those specific dates. You know, every year, it's our job is to make sure we're looking close and bring you all budget that, one, balances and, two, is aligned to the priorities. And again, our main priority is always our people, and we'll make sure that continues there. I want to say quick, take a moment to recognize the significant work being done in the Mechanicsville-Lonsdale-Bommont solution. MLB has some people who thought that was Major League Baseball. It is not. We're not going to saw Major League Baseball. Just looking at that, that community, that general community, I know sometimes that means different things to different people, but just kind of looking at what that area looks like. So, first, I want to thank our team and the community members who helped in this work. I want to thank everyone who's filled out surveys and attended meetings that played a pivotal role, as well as our team members who researched best practices and the programmatic needs of our community. Really good process, I know, working with those principals there. They did a great job as well, as far as even being able to have meetings in languages that were there for the families and had that ability to participate as well. I just want to say, as we think about this, because you'll hear in a little bit from Dr. Adams, so major investments of this scale only take place about every 50 years in a community. And so, I really applaud Dr. Adams' approach to really thinking about a whole, we saw that in the fair gate, a whole community solution. I think we're nearsighted if we go in just trying to do one thing that we said we were going to do five years ago. This is no different for us. So, I appreciate Dr. Adams taking the time to evaluate how we use these funds. One thing I know about him is that he is a guy of a lot of integrity. I've known him for a long time, and he's, and he's very, wants to make sure those dollars go the furthest for kids, because he's made a career out of making that happen. So, I appreciate that. So, you'll hear in just a minute how these decisions are guided and what the community values. We look at three things when we look at these, and he'll speak to that. We want to know what the community values, but at the same time, we have other things. It's not just a vote on that. It's also best practices in education. We saw that, looking at some of the things we've done in the past to improve, and then also programmatic needs. We do have budget constraints. We do have five-year plans. We do have other communities that also we're looking at those. So, all of those go into the recommendation you'll see today. But I want you to know, I'm very confident the presentation you hear tonight will highlight how this position will be, this community will be positioned for success in the future. And we talk a lot about that. You know, we may not all be here when all this happens, but we've got to think ahead for those communities and for those students who will be there. Well, this is longer than I thought. I apologize, Madam Chair.
No, but you're right. It is all, it is all positive things.
It is. So, just wanted to hit two, honoring Black History Month and MLK Day. On January 21st, we were able to be part of celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. Excited that three members of the Knox County School family were recognized by the MLK Commission for their leadership and dedication to our community. Our very own Alicia Jones, our executive director of student support, and her husband Vincent were honored with the Grand Marshall Award. Rakia Foster, who's an assistant principal at Austin East High School, received the education award, and if you were there, also delivered a fiery speech. I think she could have been the keynote. Rakia, Rakia is passionate about her children, for sure. And then, Javion Carter, a student from Austin East Magnet High, was presented with the youth award. This is always a special time for me. I think a lot of Reverend Middlebrook, and I always tell, I always tell my wife before I go, we're going to get to sing today. Like, I always, I love, there's something powerful about seeing "We Shall Overcome" with the guy who was there. And it's just, everybody locks arms, and it's just a very powerful time. So, we always definitely appreciate Dr. King and his example and believe in the transformative power of edu, his belief in the transformative power of education to create understanding, bridge divides, and provide opportunities for all. So, that was great. And I'll close with, last week, we were able to have at the Lunch House, our superintendent, was it called Lunch with the Superintendent, something like that?
Lunch with the Super.
Yeah, Lunch with the Super, that's what it is. I don't know, I was there. But a great time to talk to some community members and hear from them, and just want to let everyone know that we'll be at Salsa Rita's in Fountain City on February the 26th at noon. So, I hope you can come by and have some informal conversation with us then. And with that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to share. That concludes my report.
Those are all good things. We have a lot of good things going on in our schools and in our community. I hate, I miss some of those, because Logan had the flu last week. So, lots of great things going on in our schools. Mr. Triplett, do you have a legislative update for us?
I do. All of our board receives TSB's legislative notes. You should have got them on Friday, so you have a bunch of information. But the Education Freedom Scholarship Act passed. Only part that we will have to do with that, and I'll ask Mr. Dupit to kind of keep an eye on that, there is a stipend for teachers that we have to pass a resolution in some way, and I don't know all the details of that. But TSB is supposed to put out a sample resolution for us, and so at some point, it has to be done by June 1st. So, at some point, we'll get that and bring that to you, and we can have that discussion, figure out where we need to go from there. So, tomorrow, all the education committees, they meet and begin their organizational sessions next week or this week. No bills have been calendared for them, but all the House ones meet starting tomorrow. The Senate Education Committee does not meet this week. And then, just a reminder, and it should be in a link for you all, TSB monitors all of legislation that impacts education, and there's a link for you to click on and follow all of that and see what's happening and obviously reach out to your representative. So, thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the legislative update.
Thanks. And y'all should have a folder at your seats with your, all the information for your upcoming institute, TSB Institute. Okay. Ms. Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a Strategic Plan Committee update, and the strategic planning process is currently in phase three. Our partner, Accenture, continues to analyze data and stakeholder feedback, and will be drafting a plan for the Strategic Plan Committee to review. Last month, Accenture convened two one-day workshops, one with district leaders and one with region leaders, to review timelines, data, and measure, measures of success to enhance their understanding of work already underway in the district, as well as the needs on the horizon. The Strategic Plan Committee will meet with Accenture again in the coming weeks to review their process, and once a draft has been finalized, the next step will be to review with stakeholders before submitting a final proposal to the Board for consideration.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Christie. Mr. Triplett, back to you, Clothing Center.
All right. The Clothing Center group met on, committee met on Monday, January 27th to kind of discuss what the plans were for the Clothing Center. We identified five agencies that already meet some needs of Knox County students, and Ms. Templeton was gracious enough to take the responsibility of reaching out to those. And so, there was a, the email today and then US Mail to notify them of the application process, should they desire to have some involvement in the Clothing Center. And so, we will issue a public notice and share application instructions on February 14th. And then, folks who are interested can submit a letter of intent for application to the Board by February 28th. And then, all the applications are due in the Board Office by March 14th, and which time then we'll, we'll discuss them, go over them, and make a recommendation to the Board, what we think is the best decision for the Clothing Center. And that concludes the Clothing Center update.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on that. Appreciate it. All right. Dr. Adams, I'm excited for this presentation on the not Major League Baseball plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I do appreciate you all taking the time to allow us to present. We are very excited about some of the findings that we had today. Ms. Lotner will be co-presenting with me on the survey. I know there were some questions, and she's going to bring some information on how those surveys were weighted and provide some additional context. I also like to recognize Reverend Dr. Butler for his work. He's been an intricate part of this work. We've been working on this for the past two years, and I do appreciate your support, your patience, and your involvement along the way. So, greatly appreciate the work that you have done, working within your community and certainly working with my team. And so, I do want to recognize Reverend Butler. So, how did we get here? So, in 2022, the city of Knoxville received a HUD grant for $40 million. That projected 40, 400 additional students within that area. In 2023, Knox County Schools developed a Region 5 strategic plan within that area. Now, again, I do want to recognize Reverend Butler's work with the strategic plan, but also roughly 250-plus community members in collaboration with Knox County Schools really worked together to come up with that plan. And some of the things that we'll point out in tonight's presentation that are included in that strategic plan are the added preschool space and more academic, academic opportunities for students. In 2024, thanks to our distinguished school board, we approved $66 million for the Mechanicsville-Lonsdale-Bommont solution. And I do want to recognize that those are all unique communities. And so, when we talk about Mechanicsville, Lonsdale, and Beaumont, I want to be clear that that is the area, right? So, they're very unique communities within those schools, and so that is the area that we are focusing on. So, again, Mechanicsville, Lonsdale, and Beaumont, what schools are we discussing? You have the Beaumont Magnet Academy, you have Maynard Elementary You have the Beaumont Magnet Academy, you have Maynard Elementary, you have Lonsdale Elementary, and you have Westview Elementary. I would like to recognize that community and their work as they came out to many community meetings. We had a total of eight community meetings. We had a great turnout, and we had great dialogue, and they shared a lot of information. We had every principal attending those meetings. As a matter of fact, they attended multiple meetings, and so there was a lot of support for their colleagues as well. We also had faculty and staff that attended those meetings, so we received tons of input from our faculty and staff. So greatly appreciate the input that they, that we received. Also, the community, again, Ms. Lotner will go over that, shared some information with the survey. So that is very important as we go through this process. It's a little different. Those of you know, I'm a former high school and middle school principal, but I'm also a Special Education Director, and the size is comparable to Knox County Schools. And so the work that we do is very unique to how school operates, and you can't do that without input from communities, right? And so moving forward, this is a process. Again, we did it, as Dr. Reisweig recognized, in the Farragut, the town of Farragut, and we're going to continue to do that work as we move forward in looking at solutions within communities. So I do want to draw your eyes to this slide here. This is the Mechanicsville, Lonsdale, and Beaumont feeder pattern. This is not an ideal feeder pattern, what you're looking at for elementary schools, for middle schools, and for high schools. And so when you think about transitioning from elementary to middle to high, you always think about age-appropriate peers, right? And so as they move to their prospective schools, Beaumont is a prime example, they're feeding it to several middle schools, and they're feeding it to several high schools. That is something that, as we look at building new schools and we look at zoning in that area, we like to clean up those feeder patterns. So we like to keep students within their communities, so they can attend school with their age-appropriate, appropriate peers when we can do so. So that is, that is ideal, and moving forward, that is, that will be our focus. So the challenges in the MLB area. So one, we had the anticipated growth from the Transforming Western Project. I do want you also to keep in mind, even though those four additional students are already accounted for, that the work that they are doing with that HUD grant, this does not account for any additional or new development. It is anticipated that you will have much more additional development in that area as that project takes off. You also have limited programmatic opportunities and wraparound student support. So when you talk about programming, and again, this is me speaking from a principal's perspective, when you talk about programming, the larger your school is, it gives your principal more options, which gives more students options. Also, the more students you have, the more teachers you have. So it gives a lot of flexibility within your schedule, but it also gives you additional teachers to where you can do unique things. So you talk about tutoring and resources, just an example of that. You can get real granular in your schedule to provide additional support for students, whether that's enrichment or whether that's an intervention, right? And so that's where you have unique STEM programs, arts, and so forth. Also, when you look at a smaller school, you end up sharing resources. So when you think about our, our greatest resource or asset, it's a teacher, right? Or those, or those support systems. And so a lot of these schools that are smaller schools, share counselors, they share social workers, and they share encore teachers. And I do want to touch base on the last one, and again, speaking from my experience as a Special Education Director in a large district, what that looks like, and this is not unique to Knox County Schools, you end up, maybe because the school does not have the ADA capabilities within the building, you end up transporting students outside of their community to a neighboring school. And that is something that we certainly want to focus on and get away from as we build new schools. We want to ensure that those students have those supports. Again, that's near and dear to my heart. So when you build new facilities, you want to ensure that you have state-of-the-art facilities to ensure that they're ADA accessible and the programs are there for those unique needs. Limited preschool space, the district has done an exceptional job of focusing on the pre-K programs and catching those students early. And so again, that is something that we want to continue to focus on and build that program. And again, just the facts, we currently do not have a middle school in that community or in those communities. So why new construction, construction? Well, it adds capacity. Again, we talk about enrollment. We want larger schools to ensure that we have the adequate resources we need in teachers and programming. The space on the existing MLB campuses now, it, we're landlocked, I mean, just to be blunt about it. And what ends up happening is you have to disrupt the learning environment. So we have to get what you call a certificate of occupancy. So they have to clear us to say that students can occupy those spaces. When you have construction on existing or older buildings, you disrupt a lot of things. Anywhere from foundation to, to the ceilings, to sprinklers, to fire alarm systems, there are a lot of things that you have to invest in and upgrade as you're trying to conduct school and run school. And again, make sure, we want to ensure that it's ADA accessible for existing students or students to come. So all of those things become problematic when you look at building or doing additions or any type of renovation on an existing school. And again, it's a better use of dollars, right? So we look at maximizing student opportunities, maximizing or enhancing learning, when you can look at state-of-the-art facilities and allocating those dollars to ensuring that those students get the programs that they need. So I will let Ms. Lotner jump in. I'll give her a tag out here in a second. I'll tag back in. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. So I will be brief, but before Dr. Adams dives into our proposal for that MLB area, we want to take just a quick step back and reflect on our approach, our strategy as a district when it comes to planning for these major capital investments, because we know that this is a major capital investment. As you know, we're a vast system. Knox County Schools is a large district. We have five regions. We have about 60,000 students. Those of you who have been with us for a while know that we're also seeing significant shifts in our student population. We have schools that are experiencing significant increases in student enrollment. We also have schools that are experiencing decreases in student enrollment. And so with a finite or with a limited budget for capital improvements, and that's exactly what we have, it is limited, we need to take all of that into consideration when we are making these investments. And so you heard from Dr. Reiswick earlier, and I thought this was incredibly well put, that this is a very rare opportunity. We don't often have $66 million to invest in any community. And so when we have that opportunity, we have to be strategic with how we allocate those resources and how we plan for the future. Those of you who are with us with the Farragut School Solution know that as we walked through that development process, it became very, very clear that that traditional approach, that idea of building a replacement school was no longer sustainable. It wasn't enough to meet the needs of, let alone one community, but the entirety of our district. And so as we plan for these dollars, we have to think holistically, but we also have to be very future-focused. And for us, that looks like what you have on the screen here. It looks like taking a whole-community approach to strategic planning and really thinking about these three domains in everything that we do, and as we're making decisions, keeping in mind best practices, programmatic needs, as well as community input. And so what do we mean by that? When we're talking about best practices, we're really talking about those research-based, those evidence-based practices that would be true for any kid in any community. This is just what staff know to be true, either anecdotally or from research, that is best for kids. That's a lot of those infrastructural decisions, the capacity decisions that are made, the staffing decisions that are made, that have to be taken into consideration when we are making a large-scale investment in a community. When we're talking about programmatic needs, we're talking about needs that could be a little bit more community-specific. So that's looking at, in a given community, in this scenario, in the MLB area, what's missing that we want kids to have access to? What's present that we want to scale and ensure more kids have access to? What's working, what's not? And how are we planning to ensure that students have those specialized services, those wraparound supports that they need and that they deserve to be successful in their academic journey? So all of that is boiled down to the programmatic needs that we're keeping in mind as we're developing a proposal and a recommendation to make to the Board. And finally, community input. You heard from Dr. Adams, you heard from Dr. Reiswick, that this is something we take very seriously, engaging the community that lives in the academic environment, is familiar with the academic environment. In that conversation, to dream with us a little bit, what do you want the academic space to look like? What programmatic needs are you seeing so that we're making a decision that is informed and is staked in kind of the reality that the community has articulated to us? So as I say, all of that, something that I'm reminded by, and you heard it from Dr. Reiswick earlier today, I've heard it from Dr. Adams many, many times, is that when you make an investment of this scale, you're really making a generations-long investment, right? It will outlive all of us, and so we want to keep that in mind. We want to keep these three components in mind so that we are grounded in a very future-focused decision-making mentality as we go into that proposal. And so again, this is our commitment to whole-community solutions, a little bit of what it looks like and why we're going to anchor everything we talk about today in best practices, programmatic needs, and community input. Specifically, we're going to talk about some of the key considerations that we weighed in each of these domains over the course of that planning and development process. I'm going to begin with community input, and what I'll say, again, just as we think about community input, is that this is really that opportunity for us to dream a little bit as a community, for us to assess what matters, what values the community has as it relates to that academic environment and to programmatic opportunities for students. Something that we know for a fact, anytime we go out and we do this work, is that there's always a possibility that we're engaging participants in a community survey, or we're engaging participants in a community meeting that may not actually wind up with a new school. But what we do want is for that whole-community approach to yield a net positive impact for every participant. And so that's why we ask folks to dream with us a little bit, what do you like? What's important to you? What do you value as it relates to that academic ecosystem? And so for us, as we think about the MLB project, the community input process really was multimodal. It was two-faced. We began with a community survey, and we followed that with some community meetings, and here's what we learned. The community survey, we had a pretty good response rate, just shy of 300 respondents. We did send that survey out both electronically and on paper, just trying to reach as many folks as possible. The survey itself was provided in three languages, English, Spanish, and Korindi. You can see the breakdown in school affiliation from our respondents. And I do want to talk just a moment about the methodology that we used. I know that there have been some questions about that, and this is something that we were really excited to be able to take on. Usually when you take a survey, it's click one option, vote, and you get one choice for one option. And we know that when we're considering big decisions, it's a lot to boil that down to one choice, one vote, one option, right? And so what we really wanted to do was ask folks two very insightful questions, incisive questions, and I'll share those with you in just a moment, and then let them rate their priorities, what mattered most to them. And so every respondent was given a series of options and asked to rank those, from most important to second-most important to third-most important to fourth-most important. Each of those options received a favorability score that really just helped us boil down kind of what mattered most to the community at large. And so what you'll see is how those surveys shook out. So on the survey, the very first question we asked was, when you think about education in your community, which of the following options do you feel is most important? Survey respondents had, remind myself how many are here, seven options to choose from on this question, and you can see from the red bar that the most favored, the most important factor for the community at large, was maintaining a supportive learning environment for all students. That's in the red bar there. The second tier of responses are in blue, so these are those three factors that didn't elevate to the rate of being the most highly-rated response, but were very important to the community at large, and that was increasing the number of advanced academic options for students, keeping the number of students at schools in the community as low as possible, and having more options for middle schoolers to attend a school closer to their neighborhood. Something that I will note, because you do see this sometimes when you're working with a ranked choice survey, occasionally, you get an option that has a zero value. If nobody rates a factor, an option, as being one of the four most important options, it would appear as a zero here, and you can see that wasn't the case. So someone, a lot of someones actually, felt that any number of these factors was important to them, did shake out as being one of their top four most important factors, most important considerations. And so what that tells us is that at the end of the day, it's all important and it all matters. But you can see kind of where that significance, that significance rate sort of shakes out and what was most important to the community at large here. For the second question, same process. The question was, when you think about opportunities you want students to have access to, which of the following options do you think are most important? So here, it's a little bit closer between your first and second most favored options, but the first, first option here, the most highly-rated option, was expanded STEM programming. So that's that science, technology, engineering, and math programming, followed very closely thereafter by expanded arts programming, music, dance, et cetera. And then you also see the next two most highly-rated factors were more advanced academic programming for middle school students, followed by, or actually preceded by, more advanced programming for middle school or elementary school students. And again, this is another one that every single one of these factors was rated as being most important, second-most important, third-most important, fourth-most important by a combination of the participants. So those three factors on the left there may not have risen to the, the level of importance as the factors on the right, but they were rated as important by some members of the community. And so we take all of that into account when we're planning and when we're devising the proposal that you'll hear in just a moment. So the second phase of the community input process was those community meetings. You've already heard a little bit about those from Dr. Adams. We did have eight community meetings. We were able to convene a morning session and an evening session at each of the four elementary schools in the area, just to give folks as much opportunity as possible to come out and be engaged in the process. We did facilitate those meetings in four languages. I want to give a huge shout-out to the Welcome Center and our family and community liaisons. This was a large undertaking for them, but very much a worthwhile one to be able to facilitate those community sessions in English, Spanish, Korindi, and Akiteco. We did have a little over 145 participants all told, so a great participant rate from the community at large. And in addition to hearing from Dr. Adams, some high-level feedback from the surveys and some next steps, and sort of what we were thinking as a district, we did ask every participant to give us one more round of feedback, and we asked that they engage in kind of an exit ticket on the way out the door. Every participant was given two sticky dots that they could spend any way that they wanted. So we asked participants to consider three more, six more factors, sorry, six more factors, and let us know what was important to them. Again, just really capturing the value within the community that we needed to keep in mind as we developed this, this proposal and this plan. So you can see here, we've got the six factors on the screen. The two most important, most highly-rated factors within the community were, number one, increasing options for tutoring, recess schedules, encore programming, et cetera. And I'll say this, participants could sticky any of these posters with both of their dots, so they could spend both of their dots in one place if that was the most important factor to them. If they wanted to split up their dots, they could spend one dot on one poster and spend another dot on another poster. We did have these translated into all four of the languages that were present. You can see the picture of the two English posters for the two most highly-rated factors here. The second most highly-rated factor was proximity of my zone school to my house, so how close is, is my school to where I currently live? And then you see the other four factors on the side in order of their rating of importance. Number three was having space for a dedicated preschool in the community. Number four was reducing the number of transitions between schools. Number five was keeping in mind walkability to and from school. And number six was availability of bus transportation for students. And so that's just how that last round of feedback shook out in the community meetings. And I will take a deep breath, and I will pause right now, and I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Adams to tell us a little bit about what that means for the options on the table.
Thank you, Ms. Lotner. So looking at the options for, the new construction options for the MLB community feedback, I do want to draw your attention to a couple of things here. One, where you see the asterisks, that means that these options are aligned directly with the Region Five Strategic Plan. What you see highlighted in red, and it's important that I mention this, because you will not see the same thing on the other slide, these are areas where the community said that these areas are most important to them, right? And so when you look at those areas, the first one's add middle school capacity, supportive learning environment for all students, again, aligned with the Strategic Plan, Region Five Strategic Plan, increased advanced academic offerings for elementary school students, aligned with the Strategic Plan, increased advanced academic offerings for middle school students, aligned with the Region Five Strategic Plan. You have expanded arts program, you have expanded STEM program- You have expanded STEM program, again, which is aligned with strategic plan. And then, you have low student numbers at all schools. The bottom two categories, again, to Ms. Lotner's point, these are the areas where the community said were most-important. So, increasing options for tutoring, recess schedules, encore programming, et cetera, and proximity of my zone school to my house. Now, each one of these areas, we looked at, what do three different options look like? And again, just very similar to the Fergie solution, we want to look at multiple options, right? And we want to see what gives our students the best opportunity to access learning. And so, as you can see with the areas that we identified with new elementary schools, the areas it does not give you. And if you look at the new middle-school, you can see where there are two areas which you do not have that. And then, you look at the middle-school, you have low student numbers at all schools. And this was something that we addressed with the community. I don't know how much the public knows, that the more students you have, the more access you have to teachers, and the more access you have to programming. So, that was discussed in length at a lot of our meetings and addressed with the community. So, that is an area, when we do look at building new schools, one of the things that we don't want to do is unless the circumstances say that that is best for students. When you look at small schools, and you look at less teachers and you look at less programs, right? And so, we really want to give our students the best opportunities to access learning. The other area was proximity of my zone school to my house. And so, you look at the middle-school area, the like, in the community, that's closer in the elementary school. Remember, there is areas of the Lonsdale community. It's a very small area, and we did address that. And what's interesting is, as soon as we said that in the Lonsdale meeting, they said, "Oh, I know exactly what you're talking about." So, there is an area that they know that is on the outskirts of Lonsdale. So, that would be the area that would provide, we would provide transportation from Knox County schools. And so, our programmatic needs, when you look at programmatic needs, this is really focusing on those areas we talked about, special education, ELL, tutoring, STEM, advanced arts, and so forth. So, identified programmatic needs in the MLB area, we want more preschool space, we want a middle-school program in the community. That's something that we currently do not have. We want innovative programming. Again, we talk about advanced academic STEM in the arts, increased onsite special education services. Again, we do have multiple specialized special education programs. And anytime we look at doing a renovation, or an addition, or new construction, that is an area of focus. We want to ensure that we have those programs within the community. And also, enhanced ELL programs. So, again, that, these are the areas that we flagged as far as identified program needs in the Mechanicsville, Lonsdale, and Beaumont area. So, this is the new construction option for programmatic needs. Now, this is a little different. When you're looking at, these are best practices, right? So, you're probably looking at, why is this in black? Well, that is, again, the, you've got the asterisks for the Region 5 strategic plan. The areas in black are best practices, but this was not highlighted as a community priority, per se. Now, I will say, when you look at surveys, normally, when you look at that data, you will normally find something down in the zero area, or very few input as far as a need. What we did see is there was a need across the board. So, every one of those categories were very important to the community. So, add middle-school capacity, again, that was one of the priorities for the community. Add preschool capacity, that is identified in the Region 5 strategic plan, increased advanced academic offerings for elementary-school students, that is identified in the strategic plan, and that is an area that the community felt was a need, or the communities, excuse me. Increased advanced academic offerings for middle-school students, again, identified in the Region 5 strategic plan and an area that the community felt was important. Increased onsite special education services, again, best practices, enhanced ELL programming, best practices, expanded arts programming, this is an area that was flagged, that's an area of need and importance to the community, and expanded STEM programs, this is something that is aligned with the Region 5 strategic plan, also very important to the community. Again, if you look at all of those areas, you can see, in this particular area, the K-8 school is an option that checks all the boxes, right? If you look at the new middle-school, of course, it does not identify, it does not address the concerns for a preschool, and it also does not address the concerns for increased academic opportunities for elementary. If you look at elementary, it does not identify the need for a middle-school, and it also does not identify the need for advanced academic areas for middle-school students. Okay, so this goes back to our best practices. And so, our best practice relative to the MLB community or solution, we want to reduce the number of transitions between schools. I know Ms. Lotner had worked on some research last year when we looked at transitions, and this is when we went from a primary to three elementary schools. And what we realized from the community is that was a need, and research shows that multiple transitions cause learning loss, right? That is research-based. Also, increasing flexibility for scheduling. So, you look at tutoring, encore classes, and so forth, I will just give you an example. I had a high-needs middle-school at one point, and we needed intervention. And so, RTI had just came out, I don't know, it was probably a little over a decade ago, and I pulled a teacher out of the classroom, and she was my RTI coordinator. I was fortunate because she was a former principal. Now, I was able to do that because I had a large middle-school, and I had flexibility within my schedule. So, that does give you the flexibility, the principal and the region directors, to really work with the principal on schedulings and really be intentional about our students. Adding capacity for preschool programming, again, that is a focus for the district. Increasing student enrollment to provide a more full-time staff to support. Again, we talk about the shared resources, when you talk about counselors, you talk about social workers, when you talk about small schools, when you have one administrator, it makes it very difficult, right? And we want to ensure that our students have the resources available to them to meet their needs. Maintaining a supportive learning environment for all students is something that we all can agree on. And what gets us there? What does that look like? How do we provide all of those opportunities for those students? So, again, we want to talk about best practices and going back to what was highlighted in some of the surveys. We had, again, the asterisks is aligned to Region 5 strategic plan, you had add preschool space, supportive learning environment for all students, it is identified in the Region 5 strategic plan, but it's also highlighted in what the community said was important to them. Reduced transitions between schools, again, research-based best practices, increasing options for tutoring, resource, scheduling, encore, and programming. Again, we talked about what that looks like within a school and a community. How do you get those resources? Again, that was an area of importance for the community. Increasing student enrollment to provide more staff and for students, teachers, administrators, and so forth. And so, again, when you look at the options that you have, the new elementary school and the new middle-school does not check all of the boxes, but when you look at a new K-8, that does give you the additional supports that you need within that school. So, before we go into the proposal, I do want to, I did say to the board that we would bring back land identification. And so, when we talk about the MLB solution and looking at property, again, this has been a two-year search, right? And anytime we start talking about a new school, we start researching what land is available. And so, if you look at Site A, you have some environmental issues there. And if you look at Site B, it's 8.7 million, and the available acreage is only 16 acres. And if you look in that area, you know, it's tight, right? When you get into the center-city, it's really tight, and so, the cost of land is, it goes up significantly. You look at Site C, it's unavailable. It's one of those that we looked at, but it was not for sale, right? And so, we work with partners, we work with Knox County Government, we also work with the City of Knoxville when we look at, look to identify land, and we work with additional partners to look at these properties and really reach out to see if they're even available. And Site D, it was last purchased for 8.5 million. Again, you're looking at demolition costs, you're also looking at a facility currently on that site for lease, and that really pushes out your timeline if it's even available. So, what we landed on was the rural site. And again, we have been working very closely with the City of Knoxville and Knox County Government, trying to find a site. And I will tell you, when you look at considerations, historical significance, I will tell you, I started teaching over 20 years ago with that man right there, Dr. Brown, and we started at Central High School. And if I had a quarter for every rural high-school story that I heard, I would be a multi-billionaire. And so, it is a historical site of significance. And so, that was definitely a site that we felt very strongly would meet the needs of the community, as far as proximity, as far as historical significance. So, we are very excited to work with Knox County Government. And again, this is the site that we have identified. We will come back before the board, and I'll get into that with the proposal. So, the MLB solution proposal, again, going back to what Ms. Lotner had talked about, when we look at this, when we look at our strategy, our planning, we factor in all of these things, best practices, programmatic needs, and community input. That is the process that we have done to make a well-informed decision. So, this is what it would look like on the rural site, and what we're looking at is a K-8 school. It would serve approximately 1,000 elementary-school students. It would serve approximately 600 middle-school students, excuse me. What I would like to say, this is programmatic capacity. We currently have a committee that's really looking at, what does programming look like within every building? This gives us a unique opportunity to look at a building and say, how do we build it out as far as programming, right? We have a committee that that's what their focus is on, and so, we can be very intentional on programming, but that gives us room as far as capacity. But it also looks at, when you talk about 1,600 total students, you're looking at, that's not what the building holds, that's just for programming, right? So, the Westview Elementary School would be converted into a dedicated preschool. I will say, we looked at all three schools, and that was certainly the best option for various reasons. So, Westview would be converted into a pre-K program. Then, we would be looking at a land swap, and that would be Beaumont Magnet Academy and Materan Elementary with Knox County Government. So, an innovative K-8 and dedicated preschools will address anticipated enrollment increases as we talked about the Western Heights, sorry, the Western Project, Transformation Western, they've changed it. So, when you look at the additional enrollment, 400 additional students, again, we do highly anticipate that that area will continue to grow with development. Add preschool and elementary and middle-school capacity in the community. A K-8 will provide the space, a standalone space for our pre-K program, something that we are investing in. It would also give us a state-of-the-art building that would serve students with elementary and our middle-school students. It would reduce the number of transitions between schools. Again, we talked about the multiple transitions and why that can be problematic for student learning. And we talked about increased opportunities for innovative programming, flexibilities with your programs. The larger your schools are as far as your student population, the more opportunities you have for programming and additional teachers. We talked about increased options for tutoring, recess schedules, encore programming, et cetera. Think about enrichment, think about intervention, think about advanced academics, think about your arts programs. It gives you that opportunity and that flexibility within your schedule, provide more students and teachers with more full-time support staff. Again, when you look at some of our smaller schools, they share those administrators, counselors, social workers, et cetera. So, this gives you an opportunity to have support staff and teachers in your building five days a week. So, the path to the new school. So, April 2024, thanks to our board, we approved 66 million in our five-year capital plan. On December 2024, we had the community engagement meetings, and again, very appreciative of the communities coming out and sharing their thoughts and giving their input. I can tell you, it was very beneficial for myself and my team and all of the teams within Knox County Schools that have really dove into this work and really tried to get a good feel of what the communities need. And so, today, we are, this is the proposal. And so, we will come back before the board on March 2025. As far as land acquisition, that is a MOU that we will be working out with Knox County Government. And then, we'll move into the building and design. And so, that goes before the board, that goes out for bid. It takes a calendar year, right? So, when you look at the design of a new school, it does take a year, and so, that's why it kicks in into 2026 to 2028, when construction would begin. Questions?
Ms. Pike.
I said I wasn't going to have questions, but I do. You're surprised, I know. Thank you so much for giving this presentation and to your teams and everything. I really appreciate this, and I know that this is in my district, but I do have a few questions, and I'll try to be quick about it. I, and because there aren't page numbers, I'm going to show you where. So, this one, the community survey one, where it kind of lists out school affiliation, for the like ranked-choice survey, I was curious if I could potentially get a number of how many transfer students we have at each of those schools? I'd be really interested to know that. And then, I was curious if in some of this, in some of the surveys, if you asked whether the family was a transfer or not, or whether it was their zone school?
Ms. Pike, thank you so much. We did not ask whether or not the respondents were there on transfer, but we can get you the number of transfer students, for sure.
Okay. But obviously, definitely parents of students in those schools, right?
Yes. So, you received the survey one of two ways. You were either a resident within the schools that, within the zone of the four elementary schools. So, regardless of whether you had an elementary-school student, middle-school student, or high-school student, if you lived within one of those four school zones, you received this survey, or if you had a student who is currently enrolled at one of those schools. So, that would have included students there on transfer as well.
Okay, cool. Next question. So, I see all the programming. This looks really wonderful. I know that this is what a lot of the families are asking for, but I was curious if this would be deemed a magnet school?
So, I will kick that question to our Assistant Superintendent of Academics. I will say, when we do plan for a new school, the programming piece comes later on, right? Because, number one, you have to bring in a new principal onboard, and then you start that process as far as staffing, and then you start the process of programming. And so, Dr. Wilson can probably speak to it better than I can as they plan for that.
Well, I'll start by just tacking on to his answer. I think it's rather early in the process to say yes or no to that question. What I will say is, you know, I think that obviously, there is a lot of experience with the magnet in this community, in these communities, and interest in kind of the future of that. And, you know, I would say that we look at lots of different ways when we're thinking of academic programming to provide innovative opportunities and choices for families. And, you know, those are programs in this community that have been successful over time, and we're not really in the habit of trying to do away with things that we think work well. And so, we certainly will be looking at that. I think if you look at the survey information provided there, there's a lot of nod towards things like arts, things like STEM, certainly advanced academics. I think, when I think of elementary-level and advanced academics, you know, that line between the performing arts and STEM and things like that, it sort of gets a little blurrier. But again, we hear that loud and clear, and I think that we've seen a lot of success over time, and so, those are all things we take into consideration as we move forward.
And so, if we move forward with this, I assume that a playground and that equipment would be included?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. And on that, because I know Beaumont has a really nice little stage that they have and stuff like that for some of their programming, is that something that would also be considered in a playground-type of setting?
So, currently, what we do when we build new schools, we have a standard playground. So, that is something that we may take into consideration in years out, because this is a unique situation. But again, working with our partners currently, we have a standard playground option for that. So, that is something that we could take into consideration.
Okay. And then, for, since we know that certainly for the magnet program, we have transfers, in this planning, do you plan to have like a certain number of transfers? Or how, I know that I'm like getting ahead of all of this, but I'm just curious if you've thought about any of that and how that would work?
We did, and what I will tell you is, the, when you look at programmatic capacity and capacity in general, the numbers that we currently have were included in our numbers.
Okay. And then, my last question is, the site, the rural high campus, I get that it's a land swap, like that's really great, historical significance, but if that is an already-standing building, do we know what the estimate for renovation is? building, do we know what the estimate for renovation is?
So the Knox County Government, they did the majority of demolition on that site. So they've already cleaned up, they've done the majority. As a matter of fact, this is probably the most cost-effective site that I've seen in my three years back in Knox County Schools. So that is not a concern that we have.
Okay. So what is currently there, like you feel there is not anything we're going to have to go back and do?
That is a great question. So I will tell you, we do have a maintenance facility that's currently there. So we would have to relocate our maintenance facility.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pike.
Ms. Christie?
Thank you. And so I just have a couple of comments and a question. And, you know, we've heard, and I want to just put this out there because I know people have signed up for public forum to speak about this. And I've heard, I've seen online, and I know we have gotten emails from people concerned or that would prefer to have a middle school instead of a K through eight. And, you know, I want to be clear that I want to be supportive of the first district and Dr. Butler, but I do not feel like Knox County Schools is currently in a position where we can give people things because they would prefer to have them over things we need. And right now, we have, we are out of room in South Knoxville. I mean, we are. And, you know, when I get emails from people saying that they want us to reject this and send it back to start over, then South Knoxville doesn't have time for that. So I want to make that clear. And I can support a K through eight school, and I have no problem with that. We've been talking about this a long time. But when we talk about doing things just based on what we want to have, you know, we, I'm just going to tell you, I don't know how Planning Commission comes up with the numbers they come up with, but all of our districts are really struggling, I think, to keep up with capacity right now. You know, I had eight new students pick up forms to enroll in a school that's already full today in South Knoxville. So I do want to be clear that, you know, I personally cannot consider a middle school if the enrollment numbers do not support that. And I can support the K through eight. And also, my question is, do, I know that we have not built a K through eight, or at least not in decades, right? Do we feel comfortable that this project can be completed for the $66 million that the board has approved for it?
Thank you, Ms. Christie. So what I will tell you is, construction is a moving target. So yes, when we went before the board and we looked at what we needed for a new school, we anticipated land being extremely expensive within that area. Now, with the land swap that we have and the cushion we gave within the budget, we do feel confident unless, again, construction is a moving target, that we can build a K-8 for $66 million unless inflation hits us, right? So I also say that, you know, and we go back to, Dr. Reiswick always says, we're going to do the hard work, right? And it would be very easy for us to build an elementary school. But looking at the needs within that community, we really thought outside of the box of what the community said they needed and what best practices said that our students deserve, right? And so if we didn't feel like we could build a K-8, then we wouldn't come to the board with that proposal. So the current numbers that we have, we can build a K-8 for $66 million. But again, that may be adjusted from, you know, within a year or two. But currently, the numbers that we have does support that. Thank you, Ms. Christie.
Ms. Templeton?
Sure. First, thank you.
There's a lot of lights on. Sorry.
I was saying, there's a lot of lights on. I'm sorry for that pause. It's blinding. Thank you. Thank you for talking to the community. Thank you for doing the hard work. Reverend Butler, thank you for being such an integral part of the decision-making to put together a tremendous win for this community. I, after talking to a lot of constituents over the weekend and last week and fielding emails as well, I'm getting a lot of positive feedback. There have been some concerns, and I've had some really productive conversations with people from both inside my district as well as outside my district. Because, full disclosure, I think you all know, I have a child that attends Beaumont, and I've been going walking through those halls for eight years now. And so that school itself is near and dear to me, so I understand what this feels like. I do understand that for a piece of the community, there's a little bit of a loss. I know that my eighth grader will not do a, you know, a graduation clapout through the halls of Beaumont, but I do recognize that this is a tremendous win for the community that it's going to serve. And I applaud you guys for the work that you've done. You know, it's appreciated, and I want you to hear that, because I have, I've heard a lot of feedback that the K through eight solution can really be a community builder and can really create an atmosphere of inclusivity that is tremendous. But there are a couple of things, I did have a couple of questions, of course. You did ask Ms. Pike about the transfers. I wanted to make sure that we had kind of on record that those that were enrolled in Beaumont has transferred, because it's about 50/50 in that school, which frankly is attributed to the success of Beaumont as a magnet school. And that's something that is important to note, that Beaumont itself is the second to STEM and career magnet, but the most sought-after transfer in Knox County Schools. I think it's important to note that because it is a magnet school, there are spaces allotted for those transfers. And what that means is that families have a choice of where their kids are going to go to school. And I feel like it's very much a win-win with the magnet schools, that we have those spaces set aside, which allows for socioeconomic diversity, that then allows for the success of the overall school and the growth. Because as someone who was once a PTA president at Beaumont, I can speak to being arm-in-arm with the community and being able to work with them and help parents who can't always come to the PTA meeting, but we can talk about what's happening there at school pickup. And understanding that not everybody can make it to a foundation meeting or a, we just got a foundation like two years ago. And so when we talk about economic disparities between schools, magnet schools help bridge that gap. And I would very much, while I understand too, that the programmatic piece of this will come later and will be up for conversation, I do recommend that we think about the vision of this school and what the goal of this school will be. Because the location rule high school was on, if you guys have a moment to go up there, it has the most stunning views of the city, frankly, truly. And I remember, I was telling, this is totally anecdotal, so I'm just going to waste your time for a second, but I dropped my daughter off for kindergarten, and, yeah, I grew up, I grew up in Miami. I sent my child to Beaumont because I was looking for the diversity that Beaumont provided. That was the reason why we went there. And I dropped her off, I was all excited, and I'm like, you know, I'm just going to drive around. And I went up, and it is Virginia, and I went up to Virginia and went up three Western Heights, and the sun was rising, and you guys, it is beautiful up there. And I want these children to be able to see that sunrise, welcome them in the morning. I think that they deserve it. And I want the school to be successful. And speaking to, you know, Keith's comments earlier about attaching the lessons that were positive to this transition, what have we learned? There are things about rural that we learned that we don't want to replicate. And there are things about Maynard that we do and about Beaumont that we do want to replicate, and a piece of that is the magnet school. And specifically, that allocation of seats for the transfer students. Because I'll say it again, it provides that parent choice to be able to choose where their kids will get the best education, and also, in the same vein, provide the parent support that the school will continue to need to be successful. So I will propose something that I'm not sure has ever been proposed before, but I would like this board to consider voting to establish this K through eight as an arts-integrated magnet school. I think it's important to denote that on the front end, if at all possible, and that's something that I would very much support.
Thank you. Ms. Farno Redley?
So many non-connected questions that I have. Thank you for the presentation. It really did work out a few of the questions that I had. One of the questions I have, speaking as somebody who started teaching at Vine when it became a magnet school, I know there was a lot of ruffled feathers in the community about it. And I think part of that had to do with the fact that it was a community school, and there were outsiders coming in. I know that in the past decade, and probably before that, there was a big push to make sure that we had community schools. Because I know that parents and kids are fierce about their communities. And when you blend them all together, it doesn't always work out, you know? And I'm sure it would kind of settle out through the years. But I also subbed when they closed Vine, and I subbed at Bearden Middle, and it was a disaster. And it was at all of the places where some of the kids were bused to. But the tension between the kids there was palpable. I mean, it was, it was hard to sub. It's hard to sub anyway. If y'all tried it, I suggest that you do. But I'm just concerned that those communities are going to lose their identity as community Also had a question, like my colleague Ms. Templeton brought up, were the magnet schools, will the other magnet schools, because from what I understand, this will kind of push for the arts and STEM and all that. So what will happen to the other magnet schools, like Vine Magnet as a conglomeration of those Serra Moore Green as the technology, and Green as science and math? What will happen to those schools as far as the transfers coming in? Are they going to lose students? Are they going to lose programming? I'm concerned about those. And speaking for staff, I know that they are very passionate about their community schools as well. I felt very compassionate, positive about the experience that I had for 22 years at Bell Morris. It was a sweet, small neighborhood school. The kids knew each other. I'm just concerned with 1,000 kids, you know, like I said, the identity, you know, the personalization of that school may be lost. And the staff, would all of this staff from the schools that are closing retain their jobs? I mean, that's a lot of administrators being kind of bumped out of a position. Would they be able to keep their jobs? And the education, education support personnel, such as teaching assistants, secretaries, nurses, counselors and such, will they be able to keep their jobs? Because that's a lot, that's a lot of coming together. I have one last one. Can we call it rural elementary or rural K through eight? If it does pass for historic significance?
Thank you, Ms. Farno Redley. Let me work backwards. There is a naming committee. So that's a quick answer. As far as the staff, I'll tell you what it looked like at Mill Creek. When we opened up Mill Creek, you had staff that moved over from Hardin Valley Elementary, Pond Gap, Karnes Elementary. But again, this is a little different situation to where you're moving all of the students and all of the support staff into a new, a new school, right? I'll also say, when you increase the numbers, you need additional staff, right? And so I'm pretty confident that you'll get more, more staff. Now, to administration, I will stay in my lane. That is Dr. Reiswick and Dr. Wilson. I know Dr. Reiswick met with every one of the principals, and I know they've had those conversations. So I will, I will kick that to Dr. Reiswick.
All right. Great question. I'll try to tackle a few too, if you don't care. So yeah, we did have that conversation with administration. I think this is important to think through too, the, when you see that timeline, you were making, you guys are making decisions now for that, but it's, it's three years out on the bill. So, you know, we, I'll say everything we're saying tonight with a reserve of the right to, you know, modify as time goes along. Because, you know, for all we know, this whole place may, may all of a sudden there might be a bunch of houses that go into an area, and we don't know what we're really looking at when it comes time in three years to see some of that. So, but, but yes, with the conversations we've had with administration, we've got some great administrators in those, in those schools who do a great job of leading every day. We appreciate them being part of this process too. And as I think Dr. Wilson said that best, we're not really in the practice of stopping things that are going really well. So the same thing for these folks. They definitely will have positions with us in Knox County Schools. Now, again, what that looks like, it's been a long time since we've had a K-8. I didn't know that Chilhau used to be a K-8. I learned that in the last, in the last week, so it was kind of cool to hear from someone who went there. So, you know, there's lots of kind of neat things we'll get to do. I know there are some structures that have recently, recently been built in Upper East Tennessee that have that, and, you know, the layout, and what does that administrative structure look like, all those kinds of things. So to guarantee exactly where everybody will be, or for all we know, some folks may be retired by then, right? So we don't know. But no, reassure those folks that they will have a job with us, for sure. We appreciate what they're doing. And I think Dr. Adams says a good thing about staff too, you know, that, that would be, we have great staff. And, and, you know, through this, we don't anticipate people losing their job through this. So always when these, when these things happen, you know, some people may want a new endeavor. So we don't want to say, well, you're going to be forced to this new school. They'll have opportunities if there's other schools they'd rather work out in the district to be able to pursue those as well. I did want to hit one thing on programming, if I could. You, you talked about Vine and Serra Moore Green. The programs that, that were mentioned about the integrated arts and then also currently honors, those exist now in Beaumont. So, you know, families can choose any of those programs, unless something changed dramatically. I mean, you know, Vine, Serra Moore Green, Green, all those schools already, you know, have a, have a pretty healthy group of kids transferring there too. So I think, like always, families would have choices to apply for transfers for that. But I don't anticipate these being redundant programs. These are programs that kind of already exist. Let me say one other thing. Why I got the mic, if you don't care, Dr. Adams. So I think to totally hear the programming, totally hear that, and appreciate Ms. Templeton, your thought on that. Our staff is not trying to be mysterious about that. We just also know lots of things can happen in three years, and we don't, we, we try really hard, and Dr. Adams does this too, never to say anything that's not true. And we, so, so for us, that's why we haven't brought those kinds of things. Again, I think, I think Dr. Wilson said that, well, why, why would we discontinue something that typically has a waitlist? But at the same time, to commit fully to everything as it is now, three years down the road, you know, we might find an honors program that's even stronger. You know, the, the community's really excited about in three years. So for us to, I get the need to want to do that, so I understand what you're saying. If the board wants to do it, you guys could do that. But that's part of the reason why we haven't named program, and we've been asked a lot of that too, is we might learn a lot of things in three years that actually are better. And I think people want assurance now that what we have is what it's going to be. We don't have any problem with what is currently at Beaumont. But we also, our process typically has been name that principal, go through the community engagement, and if all that's still there, when we name that person in two years, I think we'd be fine for that. And if the board wants to do it now, you guys could do that too. But I just wanted to explain our theory of why we don't, on the front side, name that, just because we don't want to, we didn't want to do that for the future. But I would anticipate that the community would very much want the programming that's there now, and the administration has no problem with that. But that's why, I just wanted to explain that, that we're not trying to be mysterious. We're just trying to make sure we're, we're true to a process. So thank you.
I'll let, I'll let Ms. Morgan speak and then get back to y'all. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Adams, for your work on this. I know from coming in at the end of the Farragut planning, the Farragut solution, that it's a lot of work. I also have the unique vantage point that when you went through this process with the Farragut. Farragut community, I was a parent and a community member, and now seeing this presentation for the MLB solution, I'm sitting on the board, and the cool thing about having that perspective is I feel like it's, as the parent and community member, you have this view of like you're the passenger on a plane, and I could say what I think is best for the plane, but that's not necessarily going to get us to where we need to go. And you guys have so much more information than, than what most people know. And I know you guys are stewarding that information well, and I really appreciate that, and you all doing, you and your team doing what is best for kids here. So I think that's fantastic. And also, as the Farragut representative, we have big schools in Farragut, and they're kind of great. So, actually, they're fantastic. Kind of great is, is definitely underselling it. There are a lot of advantages to having big schools. So just to encourage people, not to diminish the loss that may be to, to communities with saying goodbye to a school and one closing that is near and dear to their hearts, but there are really great things that come with big schools. And, you know, we have got, in the primary school alone, well over 1,000 K through second graders, and it sounds, when my oldest was going to kindergarten, it sounded incredibly overwhelming to send that sweet little baby to, out of school with 20 kindergarten classrooms. But there are ways to make big feel small, and Dr. Rysick says that about the district a lot. I think that's true in an individual school, along with really great opportunities that can come with a big school. So I think everything sounds fantastic. Thank you guys for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Ms. Fonten Ridley?
I didn't turn one of my papers over. I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, it wasn't, it wasn't you, it was me. I didn't get, get all my papers. There was a question about parental responsibility zones and traffic crossing Western Avenue, and I was wondering if you were going to suspend the parental responsibility zones and have buses that can get the kids across Western Avenue, or is that also something that's coming up in the planning?
Thank you, Ms. Fonten Ridley. So the PRZ, that is a board set policy. We don't, we don't have any jurisdiction over that, so that would be a board decision looking at the PRZ.
Because I was, it was brought to my attention that there are a lot of families that have to walk their kids to school, and it would mean crossing over Western Avenue on foot, which I wouldn't do it, so leaving in my best discretion.
That's, I, I do have a follow-up question to that, because I know I sound like a broken record. I would love to get rid of PRZ zones altogether, so everybody has bus access. Is there a way that the board could suspend it for one school? Is that a possibility? I don't, I may be opening a can of worms, but I would love to see it.
So, so, I, I will say this.
Because you did say it's a board, and I do understand that it is a policy, but I guess it would, that, the policy would have to be amended to recognize that one school though, right?
So what I would say is if the, the board is looking at specific areas within Knox County for suspending the PRZ, the board would have to identify those areas, and then we'd work with transportation, so we could communicate the cost, and so the board would have to approve that as well.
Okay. I was just curious how that works.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, it would be a process, and I'm not saying that we couldn't, because we certainly could do whatever the will of the board is, but it would be a process. We would be creating a process for suspending PRZs in certain areas of Knox County schools.
Okay, okay. I mean, I would like to get rid of them all together, but that's a larger conversation. Ms. Templeton?
I want to ask you a question about capacity. So based on the projections by the city, this is part of the reason why we're doing this, is to make sure we have all the people taking care of and we have room for them, right? So can you walk me through just the projection of like year-over-year kind of growth? Like when we open these doors, are we full?
No, we are not. And, and what I'll tell you, that's one of the reasons we, we, we looked at programmatic capacity and, and max capacity uniquely in every school. So to give you an example, the new school in the town of Farragut, the elementary school that we were building, it will be the largest elementary school that we have built, right? Because we're looking at the projected numbers that they currently have, and so this is no different. When we look at projected numbers for the students within that community, we're using that to drive the number of students that that school would hold.
And currently, you are using the transfer numbers in that calculation?
That is correct.
That is correct, okay. There is one thing that Dr. Ryswick said that I think is important to note about, just in the whole magnet conversation, and specifically with arts integration magnet. You make a very good point, and I think it's good policy to use, to rely on the principals on this programming piece. They are the experts in their field, they can see the budget numbers that they are allotted, and make really smart decisions, and I, I trust them to do that. I want to make that very clear. I do think it's within the purview of the board to set a vision for a school. And when you talk about community impact, the Western Heights Transformation Program came about because of community feedback, and there will be a maker space, there will be a Real Good Kitchen incubator space in there. There is arts happening in that Western Heights Transformation Plan, and I think it's important to note that, and that's another reason why, just looking forward to make sure that we're all in alignment with what this community has already set in place and is moving forward with. And, and that's simply just another reason, because we have that community feedback now, I do think that we can establish it even as a magnet school to make sure that we have that overall community support.
Thank you, Ms. Templeton.
Ms. Elkins? I love it when you speak up.
Thank you. I was just kind of, kind of piggyback off what Ms. Templeton said. What do you think the student-teacher ratio will be at this new K through eight school compared to what it is right now? I know growing up, at least at Hall's Elementary, Adrian Burnett Elementary, my kindergarten class was probably like 22 to 25 kids, so that's a lot, you know? But I know some schools have smaller ratios, like 12 to 1, and that's something that I think is really important, like you get better learning, and I think that, you know, K through eight, that's a really important time in someone's life to build a good foundation to be able to produce good work in their adult life.
Thank you, Ms. Elkins. I will go back to what Dr. Ryswick said. When we look at student-to-teacher ratios, we look at a staffing formula, that may significantly change from now until three years from now, right? And so Garfield Adams doesn't want to be quoted on student-to-teacher ratio, right? Remember when you said, oh, that's three years ago? So I, I, just to be honest with you, it, I'm, I'm assuming it will change from, from now to three years from now, so I'm not exactly sure what that would look like.
Reverend Butler? I was going to ask you what your thoughts were.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I wanted to give everyone a chance to ask the questions they had. I've been very close to this for, as Dr. Adams said, for about two years, and honestly, been very close to it for about 14 years. I pastor church in Mechanicsville, and, and in the health condition I'm in now, I can walk to magnet school on a regular. So we, our church has adopted the school and been in relationship with them as a community school for over a decade, probably close to 12, 14 years. So we, so we have, we have, we have a heart in, in, in the Mechanicsville community. We have a church in Longsdale as well, that we, that I'm, I'm a presiding elder over, and so we have, so that whole community is important to me and important to the church, the churches I pastor and preside over, as well as the community, and we, as a, as a board member, seeing the schools as they are. So with all that said, I just really wanted to be clear that, so anyone know what, no one will have any doubt, I'm all in on the K through eight. I'm all in on where we are right now. I do acknowledge the concerns, and the concerns are real. I do acknowledge those who want to keep small schools and those who want to keep the schools they have. I think that when I watched the presentation that Dr. Adams gave, he gave it pretty much the same way everywhere. Same place two times in one day. And so, but one of the things I saw early on is, is that there was a conflict between a small school and all the things that parents want. Because in the small schools that we have, you can, you can look at the numbers, we don't have those services at those small schools. And the way that we operate now, we will not have those services as long as those schools are small. And our students need those services. So to me, also is the fact that with the Western Transformation, you're going to have an increase of projected 400 students, and that does not include all of the development that will come with that project. So you're going to have 2028, 2029, 400 additional students in that community. So there is a need for a elementary school growth, and there's a need for a middle school. I said this 14 years ago, that when a student leaves those four elementary schools in the fifth grade, they don't go back to school in their community for the rest of their life. And most of every district has feeder patterns, but not like that one. So we, I feel like we, we had, we, we need to fix it. I wish we'd fixed it long before now, but here we are. So, but with the concerns and with the things that I've heard, I have not disagreed with those. I just understand in order for us to have what we need, K through eight is the answer. And I know there's some folk who still want to disagree with that, and I'm comfortable with that, because I do have concerns about walkability. Truth be told, there are kids walking to, across Weston, I've been told, to Westview. That's happening now. That's a concern now. There's concerns in the other districts I know of that students are having to walk. So walkability is an issue. That's something that we have about two and a half, three years to address, asking the city and the county to help with that, and that's part of those communities and those parents who will have that, that experience. I think there's some other things that's going to be concerns, and we, but this, this is the beginning of the process. So all of those things, that, it's only one thing I think that I heard is a concern that we can't address, and that is the issue of a small community school. This, this K through eight, you won't have a small community school. The proposal calls for Maynard, and, and I, I had a funeral of a gentleman who was 77 years old. His high school class, Austin High, came to the funeral, and they, one of the persons, the president of that, shared some remarks, and they talked about when they were at Maynard School together. And so that's, that's the community. But also rural high school is part of the community, so having a rural high school back is, is significant. But nothing's going to replace Maynard, nothing's going to replace Beaumont, nothing's going to replace Westview, even though there's going to be a preschool there. So those, those things are real, and I acknowledge that, but for me, looking at everything we've looked at and, and walking along this journey, I feel like I was led by Dr. Adams and his team. I'm convinced, without any shadow of doubt, that the K through eight is the best thing for Mechanicsville, Longsdale, and Beaumont. And still having those concerns that are real, but we got to work along the process to plan as best we can to, to address them and to alleviate as much as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you for all that you do. I think your team does such a good job, I know I've said it before, with being creative with solutions that fits the needs of that particular community, and I'm, I'm excited about this endeavor, and I'm glad Reverend Butler that you spoke up and had been along, walking along this process the whole, the whole time. So I'm excited for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And members of the board, I will leave you with this. I will say, Dr. Ryswick's team, our senior leadership team, the one thing I can tell you, if you see the presentations, we will always bring a presentation that's what's best for kids, period.
Yeah.
Like that, that, that is the, the bottom line, and I, I'm a very frank individual. Dr. Rysick has to remind me of that sometimes, but, and I get real passionate about that. It's, it's very rare that you get an opportunity to do something so special for a community, and this is very, one of those opportunities that are very rare, and I'm just blessed to be a part of it, and thank you, members of the board, for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. You truly are where you belong, and thank you for sharing your gifts with us. We started with the Farragut solution, and now with this, I'm excited. And Anne, your, your proposal intrigues me. You know, Asheville does this as a district, and every school has a different identity. Like one school could be based on theater, one is an art school, so I love the, how they do that. I've been wanting to take a field trip over there, see how they do that as a district. And then every school has like these really cool programs built in, so it's intriguing. Thank you for sharing that. All right, we will, oh, Ms. Christie, I'm so sorry.
Can I just end on a happy note, Dr. Butler, Dr. Adams? From a community whose feeder pattern looks very different than this, I think the first district will be really happy when this is cleaned up.
Oh, absolutely. I'm excited about this discussion.
Your comment kind of prompted, and I've, I've talked with more than one parent about the magnet school consideration, and I echo what I heard from Dr. Wilson, Dr. Ryswick, and, and, and Dr. Adams and I have had this conversation, that we want to keep everything that's good, from every school, everything that's good. But we do understand the process, and so it may not be in the board's best interest to, to set this precedent now to say, this is what we're going to have. I think we need to make sure we let the staff go through the process of determining what's best. And I'm hoping and I'm praying and I'm fighting for the magnet component, but I don't think that we as a board should set that, because up to this point, the truth of the matter is, it's been data-driven, it's been driven by best practices, community input, and programmatic concerns, programmatic needs, and so I think we need to keep on doing that, so that we make sure we're centered on what's best for the student. Now, my thought is, I don't have, see, we can come out with not having all those things that we already have, and more, but I think we need to make sure we follow our process, and that was, that's my only concern, although selfishly, I would say, yeah, just name everything we want, and y'all say we're going to get it. But I think the process has to be followed appropriately, so that's not just my thought.
Oh, no, I completely agree. I'm just glad it was part of the discussion.
But I, but I like the idea. I do like the idea, but I just think it's just a process.
I have a process question.
Okay.
Not an argumentative question, it's a, it's a process question. And I guess, Dr. Wilson, this might be for you. At what point in this process would these concerns be brought to light? Would it be before we, and, and I know, hold, I, I don't know what page number, but there is a timeline in here, somewhere. Is it in the back? Next to the last page. Okay, okay. You've got this thing memorized. Have you seen it more than once?
Yes, I've seen, I've seen it eight times.
I've only seen it twice, so, so thank you, I appreciate it, Reverend Butler. So to meet my concerns, Dr. Wilson, at what point would it come to a conversation, and would it ever come in front of the board, or would there ever be a moment in time that this would be? Or would there ever be, um, a moment in time that, um, this would be considered to be a magnet school with a, um, with a focus?
Yeah. So I would say a couple of things and, and Dr. Adams may have to weigh in a little bit on the, the design and construction side of the equation. When you're talking about programmatic, uh, aspects of a school, certainly there are building and design components to that as well. So when you look at even in that 25, 26 space and we start to think about the building itself, if there were, you know, spaces allocated for certain things, things like that, that would be indicative of a programming, you know, decision. Certainly those would be parts of that discussion. I think when you start to get down to, um, like real specifics, uh, that are going to require maybe some additional input and things like that, you're probably getting closer to that window where you're hiring the principal, uh, which is probably that 27, 28 school year. In terms of like the real deep discussions on those things, but even earlier on in that building and design phase, uh, where you could start to hint at what is to come. Certainly those types of things come to the board when we're looking at schematics and things like that. So I don't know if you would add to that, Dr. Adams?
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Note to, uh, Dr. Wilson's point, the schematic design does come for the board. So that does give us an opportunity to revisit any, um, programs within the building that you all feel need a unique design. And so after the schematic design goes for the board, that is where they, they move forward with the, um, the rest of the design and the draft, and then they'll bring that back. So that gives an opportunity to, to really address programmings within the building.
Well, and I do understand that, um, principals by nature are creative people. Beaumont was built in 1920. That's my guess. It's got to be close. And it's one of the most successful magnet schools in Knox County. Because there have been principals that have embraced it and made this building work. And there have been, there's been a PTA that has raised the money to make that theater happen. To, um, you know, but it's those magnet funds that have helped that encore staff stay on. And, and that's the important piece of it. And I understand that, um, you guys are classifying that in this conversation as programmatic. I'm seeing it more as a vision casting on the front end, uh, is how I'm perceiving this piece of it. Yep, nope?
Okay, just, just weighing in real quick.
Please do.
I think we're, I think we're saying very similar things.
Okay.
I think you're committing a little further than, than we were ready to go. So I, 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 I don't foresee, um, that, that we're going to move away from that programming. And I, and I, and I sense you're saying, well, let's go ahead and nail it down. I, I think, I think the, the challenge on the three years, here's a, for instance, currently the honors program isn't tied to any external standard, right? So it's currently a Knox County honor school. And so like that doesn't mean anything unless you're in Knox County, right? It, it could be worth exploring. Do we want to make that something that's more nationally, internationally, whatever, like recognized? And that, that would take probably something like a, like a principal in and community input and all those kinds of things. But I think ultimately we want to make sure if, if we're saying there's an honors academy, there's probably a performance expectation that's performed with the top schools, all those kinds of things that are there. Uh, and there could be some standards that we could see from a program. So I think that's why not nailing all that down. There may be something like that even in the performing arts. I don't know. Like I don't have that knowledge. It'd be something worth researching and just kind of looking at. I don't think any of us are saying we want it to be something different. I think it's just, vision-wise, we do believe in the choice part. We do think families are choosing that and we do think these are really good programs. We probably would just want to say, let's go through the motions to see if there is, is even better. Or like the way you just said that Reverend Butler about, like, let's be better, you know? So I don't think it's like, let's move in a different direction or let's do something different. I think, um, our thought on the staff is just let the process play a little bit and see, um, if, if there is a way we can improve on it. It's not to move away from what's currently there. So, uh, but I get it. There's also the thing like, that's great. That's three years out and tonight's tonight. And people are going, I want to know now. So I, I totally, totally get that. And if the board wants to go there, like Dr. Adams said, we'll go there. I mean, we're not, we're not strongly opposed. I think that's why you haven't, I was trying to explain why you haven't seen that come from the staff, is I think we always look at everything for a continuous improvement to go, are there things we could enhance or make better? But I don't think anyone's saying we don't want, we don't think these programs should exist in this new school. We, we also have multiple schools combining potentially into this place too. And we, you know, we want to see the flavor and, and feel for everybody when we do that. So it's not a lack of commitment to want to do it. It's more, um, again, part of the process. So I'm, I'm not arguing we don't want to go there. So I don't want you to think I'm arguing with you that we don't want it.
I really appreciate this discussion. This was awesome. Thank you for these different perspectives and things to think about. I'm excited. All right, moving on to our regular agenda. I'll let everybody kind of get there first. All right. Let's start with number six. We usually start with consent, but we have an item above that, which is the superintendent's employment contract. Does anybody have any questions or discussion about that? Last month it was brought up for Superintendent Ryzwick to bring this contract to us. So it is attached. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at it. Any questions or discussions? All right. Moving on then, item C, one or two? Or three? Items four or five? Six or seven? Eight or nine? 10 or 11? A lot of fun stuff coming up at our schools. All right. Moving on then to board policies, eight A or B? Or C? And we did discuss these in policy review. D or E? Moving on then to items nine A or B? 10A? Regular agenda items, 11A or B? Or C that we just discussed? All right. Well then, moving on, Mr. Triplet to public forum, please.
Alyssa Maddox. Alyssa, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Alyssa Maddox. Um, I live in the north side of District Two, Knox County, obvious. Okay. Um, my son is a third grade transfer student at Beaumont Magnet. I appreciate the opportunity that KCS has given parents to weigh in on the decisions being made regarding the new K through eight school. When I first heard the option of a K through eight school, I will admit that I stopped in my tracks. This is a new concept for Knox County, at least of recent. And I was worried about these communities and my own children potentially being the test subjects for this new endeavor. I was also fearful of students feeling invisible in such a large school. My partner and I currently joke that our son Arthur is the mayor of Beaumont because he seems to know everyone regardless of which grade they are in. Um, and I think that this speaks to just how comfortable he is there and the sense of belonging that the school has created. I still have this fear to some degree, but my main fear was and remains the future of the magnet program. I know tonight you've said this is a piece for the future. But to me, it is the reason we transferred schools, even when my son didn't originally make it into the honors program his first year. Uh, the magnet program at Beaumont provides students who otherwise may not have access to music, art, dance and theater with an exceptional arts curriculum. As we've said tonight, Beaumont is one of the top elementary, elementary schools in Knox County. And what we have there should not close with the building. It should be nurtured and grown in this new school. I have been told that this larger school will create more opportunities for students, but I won't truly feel comfortable with the closing of such an incredible school until I'm assured that the new one will have an honors and arts magnet program as well. Um, I want to close by saying that I am hopeful. I am hopeful that a new K through eight school will create an honors and fine arts program that my son can continue through middle school. Currently, we are unsure where to send him for middle school and I love the idea of him remaining with his friends in this incredible honors program. I am hopeful that his almost four-year-old sister will be able to attend the school with him and thrive there as well. I am hopeful that our teachers and dedicated, our dedicated teachers will remain and grow in this new school. And I am hopeful that all students in these impacted schools will be able to benefit from the programs provided by a magnet school. We have the opportunity to think differently about how we approach education, to create something wonderful for our kids. And at a time when I could really use some good news, I'm hopeful that if we have to close our beloved Beaumont, we will create an exceptional K through eight magnet school. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Roundtree. Amber, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Sure thing. Amber Roundtree, Knox County. I'd like to thank the board for passing a resolution against vouchers and working to preserve public funding for public schools as this board has done for over a decade. But as the events transpired last week, I was concerned by the actions of members of this body who seem to abhor the very institution they were elected and sworn into office to manage. It's hard for me to forget the day I was sworn into office. I was just praying I wouldn't go into labor with Teddy. Luckily, he waited. But while I placed my hand on the Bible and swore to uphold the Tennessee Constitution, I did so knowing I would fight for our public schools. Indeed, Article 11, Section 12 states, "The state recognizes the inherent value of education and encourages its support. The General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance, support and eligibility standards of a system of free public schools." This provision has been upheld in case law, including Tennessee Small School Systems v. McWharter, in which Justice Reed opined, "The provisions of the Constitution guaranteeing equal protection of the law to all citizens require that the educational opportunities provided by the system of free public schools be substantially equal." Additionally, to chapters in Tennessee Code State, members of the board shall be residents and voters of the county in which they are elected and shall be citizens of recognized integrity. It's also the duty of the local board to manage and control all public schools established under its jurisdiction. Public schools take all students. All students include students with disabilities, students who speak English as a second language, students who are unhoused. Vouchers do not serve all students. Integrity is defined as adherence to moral and ethical principles and soundness of moral character. While integrity is subjective and not quantifiable, acting in direct contradiction to the core function of an office one is elected to serve is a lack of integrity. To play an active role in the destruction of public funding for public schools by speaking before the legislature in support of vouchers is antithetical to service on the Board of Education. Serving on this board has been one of the great privileges of my life. In retrospect, I'm fortunate to have served with colleagues who wholly supported public education. I did not have to sit at a table with colleagues who sold out the children of our schools for 30 pieces of silver. To the members that have stood firm in support of public education, hold fast to your integrity, your oath to manage public schools and your work for equal education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Rose. Carol, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Carol Rose, Knox County, sixth district resident. In addition to community petitions calling for Ms. Henderson to resign, I would like to formally request the school district's ethics committee, if already formed, meet as soon as practical or if not established, be appointed by the vice chair instead of the chair due to the nature of the complaint and the possibility of placing biased judges. As noted in Knox County Board of Education Policy, Section B dash 220, I will ask the chair to recuse herself from all proceedings involving this complaint. There are a number of people, including myself, that believe District Representative and Board Chair Ms. Henderson misused her public position to appear before the Tennessee legislative, legislature last week. While she stated she wasn't appearing in a personal capacity, she noted in her testimony the position she held. She also used the opportunity to just take photos and speak with Governor Bill Lee. This misuse of power can be noted in Section B dash 220 of the policy. While not specifically bound by policies like our military and federal government employees, there is still a responsibility for elected officials on local levels to be aware of how their personal endorsements can be perceived. A written request of this will follow and be sent to the Board of Education as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Fane. Rachel, if you state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Rachel Fane from Knox County. I listened to all the proposals and, and everything and I am very heartbroken that Westview Elementary was, um, roped into this decision. When I got that survey, it didn't even say Westview on the survey. So I was really confused while I was getting that survey. My kids were the fifth generation to go to Westview Elementary. My great niece and nephew would be the sixth. And while I do understand that larger schools have more opportunities, when your child goes to a school that has 200 students and you know everybody from the pickup line to the lunch ladies, everybody's like family. And I think some of the parents, when they answered those questions, had they known that Westview was, um, on the chopping block, I don't think that they would have, um, answered the same way. And I also think that while that, um, that chart did show that, um, Westview goes to three different middle schools, the majority go to Bearden Middle School. And they, they enjoy Bearden Middle School and the ones that go to Northwest, they do also. But I think that the fact that they were loved and, um, made to feel special at Westview replaces any kind of extracurricular activity that a large school would bring. But it also feels like Westview is kind of being left out on that, that paperwork where I saw the MLB. Like it just hurt that Westview wasn't named. If we're going to get rid of our school that's so important to us and so special, I would think that maybe we could be included in that. When we're reading the demographic, or I'm sorry, the data and when we went to that presentation. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Hunter Fane. Hunter, if you'll state your name and county residence, you also have three minutes.
My name is Hunter Fane. I'm from Knox County and I'm going to keep this, uh, short and sweet. I went to Westview as a child and in kindergarten I was not a very, uh, studious student. I didn't really care for school, you know, I was a kid. But the teachers there, they really helped me to become the student, helped me realize my potential. And, uh, it eventually led me into getting into UT and currently being enrolled in, uh, University of Tennessee. And I just feel if I was placed into a larger school or a school where I got less attention from teachers and just the room to grow and just come into, uh, what I didn't know I had, but the teachers saw in me. I just feel I couldn't be where I am now without Westview. And I would be very upset if other students could not be able to have the opportunities I was given. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alana Seaton. Alana, if you'll state your name and county residence, you'll have three minutes.
Golly, I picked today to come for my first speak in front of the school board. Hi, my name is Alana Seaton. I'm a resident of Knox County and I'm the parent of a current fourth grader at Beaumont Magnet Academy and a BMA and Vine Middle Magnet alumni who is also a current junior at Austin East Magnet High School. I've been an active member of the Beaumont PTA, serving as chairperson for one of two Beaumont PTA fundraisers for the past three years, of which I have invited all of you to. I'm also a master's level board certified music therapist with specialized training in neurologic music therapy, NICU music therapy, attachment parenting and childhood development. I've expanded on my points in an email to all of you earlier today, but I wanted to come tonight to speak about and emphasize my main concerns. The first being extensive research examining the efficacy of school models with underprivileged and traumatized communities shows that small school size and small class sizes overwhelmingly result in better academic performance, student growth and academic readiness for achieved performance and growth. They allow teachers and staff to better able, build trusting relationships with students identify academic and behavioral needs faster and pivot their teaching and classroom strategies more efficiently in order to better meet the learning and behavioral needs of their students. Also regarding programming for the new proposed school and speaking from my experience as an 11-year magnet transfer parent, I want to emphasize the fact that Beaumont Magnet Academy has been a shining example of success and efficacy of arts-integrated programming and curriculum in Knox County schools. To date, no assertions, reassurances or confirmations have been made or proffered by KCS on whether the existing programming at Beaumont will continue through the capital improvement process. Because the MLB populate, student population presents unique challenges and characteristics that necessitate trauma-informed educational practices and greatly benefit from the social and emotionally responsive programming like arts integration, I am requesting that the BOE and district put programmatic needs and considerations before building put programmatic needs and considerations before building considerations in moving forward with any capital improvement plan for this area and to not throw out an incredibly existing school in the process. Therefore, based on my clinical background, knowledge of childhood development and trauma, and vested interest as an actively engaged Magnet School Arts Integrative Supportive KCS parent, I strongly emphasize it and request that the Board of Education charge the district to come up with a proposal that does not just maximize efficiency, but one that takes into consideration the emotional, behavioral, cultural, and programmatic needs of the MLB area. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see all of you at Beaumont Rocks on February 16th.
Thank you. Katie Williams. Katie, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Katie Williams. I am a Knox County school resident, and I am a parent of a kindergartner at Beaumont Elementary. I'm not going to repeat some of the best practices that other people have pointed out about how it's a generally accepted consensus that the ideal size for an elementary school is 500. Anything above that, you start losing interactions between children and administrators, which means that they do not get, that they do not succeed as well on the long term. You guys talk about community input. I think you're hearing today across the board that a lot of the programmatic elements that you are saying that we will gain as elementary schools, Beaumont would be losing unless we can actually address the Magnet status. Beaumont has excellent encore programs. We have excellent parent teacher, or teacher and student ratios. I think that that is a major concern for us. But the biggest one that I wanted to point out is that there is a slide that's missing from this presentation that has been in previous presentations that actually points out the current capacity of Beaumont, Maynard, Lawnsville, and Westview Elementary and the projected enrollment. When you add up the combined capacity of those four schools, it is 2,221. And you are talking about combining all of those schools into a school that will only have capacity for 1,000 elementary school students. Currently, like, the projected five year is 1280. So you would be effectively, like, combining all of these students into a school where we would have less capacity for them, right? If we're only having an elementary school that is for 1,000 students, then how are we going to, how is closing all of these other schools actually benefiting us and helping us? I think it's kind of just a solution to, in order to have a land swap, to close these schools. I mean, I think you should consider keeping some of the elementary schools open while having a K-8 school so that we can keep our capacity. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Victor Jernigan. Victor, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My name's Victor Jernigan, Knox County. And I'm late to the process of speaking with you all about an alternative location to build the K-8 school. I recognized, and I became aware of this last Tuesday when the process was in the Knoxville newspaper and the Compass email, and then on Friday, the article came out that said it looked like the rural land swap was a done deal. But as I've been sitting in the meeting, I have seen the four properties, five properties that were considered. The one that was obviously not considered is the land upon which Knoxville College exists today. And I can offer the Knox County school system the opportunity to acquire the debt on the Knoxville College 54-acre site for somewhere between $4.6 and $4.7 million. That property was specifically excluded from the Transforming Western Heights program. Everybody's talking about 400 people coming in with the $40 million that's been spent. If you read the program, it's going to be 720 housing sites, and if you just sort of extrapolate that across, that program by itself will create more than 1,000 students. The Transforming Western Heights project is a $250 million investment, and not to be disagreeing with Ms. Templeton, but when you are on the rural high school property, the view you have is the blighted buildings of the Knoxville College property. The burned-out dormitories and the dead bodies of the people that they continually get out of those buildings from the homeless that are sleeping there. You're proposing to spend $66 million to build a new school in an area that is contaminated by the Knoxville College property. Now, I'm offering, nobody wants to get into a tit-for-tat situation in any way. This is something that is a benefit that has just come about because this school is going to be built somewhere. And the people who own the debt of the Knoxville College property are very interested in the property being continued to use for the betterment of public education. And also, you've got enough land where you could build a trade school. You could do all kinds of things with the land that is available at the Knoxville College property for the benefit of the entire community, making the Transforming Western Plan truly unique. It's an opportunity that is rare and has just come about because this decision is being made to build a new school, and this property is sitting there, ready to do something with. And separately, just as an aside, it appears that the school is being built using traditional funding methods, and the state of Tennessee has just approved a public-private partnership for financing of public institutions. The University of Tennessee is using it to build $260 million worth of dormitories right now. It's something that the school system should look at as a way to build these new schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cindy Peters. Cindy, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Cindy Peters, and I'm a Knox County resident. I'm here before you to talk as the school counselor with Westview, a history of 23 years. From the beginning, our Westview community has felt there was a lack of transparency from our district level on this proposal. For example, families were unaware the new school was a possibility when they completed that survey. In addition, the data presented today and the data presented to our community was all about Region 5. It was about Region 5 from 2023. Westview is not a part of Region 5. We are Region 1. We found out about it the week it was to be presented to us. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Some of our families did not even complete the survey because they did not see Westview listed at the top. It became apparent to our community at the meeting that Westview was only included as an afterthought because you needed our property to house the pre-K facility. At the Westview meeting, our parents came in thinking they had a voice in improving their schools, as I'm sure Beaumont and Maynard did the same. I even apologized to Dr. Adams the next day because I felt like it became personal at times. We were promised in that unrealistic presentation better programming, which we already have. Recess became a part. And last, we were told about a bigger, more modern facility with room to grow. I liken this proposal to Dr. Seuss' book, The Lorax. "Biggering is bigger, and bigger as we get." It didn't work in then, and it's not going to work now. Building a mega school will not work for our Westview community. During my time at Westview, I've seen students placed at our small school because of disciplinary issues at larger elementary school, and they thrive. They thrive because Westview offers them the small community in which elementary students need to thrive. Our school is a high-needs, low-income school, family-oriented. We use our Title I funds to pay for me there five days a week and our school social worker four days. Dr. Brace, our leader, understands our student needs and wants to make sure they have the best opportunity to go out and excel, like Mr. Fain back here at UT University. Maslow says it best himself when he says, "Students do not learn if their basic needs are not met." One school official quoted that North Shore, which has 1,200 students, does very well in their big study. It is unrealistic to compare our student demographics to that of North Shore and Farragut. Currently, North Shore has a social worker one day a week and 1.5 counselors. That means a counselor and a half. Housing 1,000 elementary, low-income, high-needs students with that level of support within one building is a disaster waiting to happen. Research shows, am I off time? Research shows students learn best in small, caring environments where they feel safe and seen.
Thank you. Sam Brown. Sam, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Sam Brown, Knox County. I just want to stand here to thank Dr. Garfield Adams and his team and my school board representative, Dr. John Butler, and our predecessor as president for the Knoxville NAACP. As stated before, this is something that the branch has been working on and advocating for, for well over 10 years. And it is very fulfilling to see that this has finally come to fruition. We do celebrate the efforts of our superintendent. Upon him becoming the superintendent of this district, he met with us, and one of our first priorities for education was to ensure that the mechanics for the lines of the Beaumont community had a middle school. The children in that community deserve to have a school in their community where they can continue to attend school with their peers, at least through to the eighth grade. We can talk about some of the decisions that were made in the past that has caused the pain in this community from being marginalized, from being degraded and forgotten about. This is an opportunity for this school district to bring back some confidence and some life to this community, reminding them through this effort that they do count and that they do matter. It was important to us and the work that stemmed from our OCR complaint, Department of Education Office of Civil Rights, when we began the work on the disparities in education outcome, that we, through our internal research and investigations and talking to those families, saw that the disparities in discipline and the truancy and tardiness issues from those schools that are in this feeder pattern was just symptomatic of the fact that there was no middle school in the community, which creates those disparities and that added burden that no student or no family should have to go through. And so I say to all of you, please, please, I know there are a lot of things that people want, but as Cory told us, we have a limited budget, and there's not really a lot that we can do. We could talk about a fairy tale situation of Knox County government fully funding public schools to really give us the money to do what we can do, but that's not where we are right now. And Dr. Adams and his team has given us the best option for it, for the resources that we have. So I would like to close with this. As St. Paul told the church at Philippi, a very small church, but a very mighty church, has supported him very well in his missionary journeys. He says in Chapter 2, Verse 3, "Don't be selfish. Don't try to impress others. Be humble. Thinking of others is better than yourselves. Don't look at only for your own interests, but take an interest in others too. You must have the same attitude that Christ Jesus had." Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Reese. Stacy, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hello, friends. I'm Stacy Reese, live in Knox County. I work in District 4 and live in District 7. And I would like to start by thanking Dr. Roswick for popping into Room 109 at West High School a couple of weeks ago. It was a pleasure, truly a pleasure, to showcase the remarkable work that our students are doing every day. Regrettably, but not surprisingly, the Nashville Legislature has disappointed us again. And you are now faced with the challenging task of passing a resolution to opt into the bonus section of a voucher bill, a measure that you previously, as a board, voted not to include in your legislative agenda and one that over 80% of Knox Countyans oppose, to secure a one-time $2,000 bonus for teachers. The governor's strategy seems clear: to create a false illusion of statewide support for a plan that in reality, the majority of Tennesseans reject. I certainly don't have the audacity to believe that I speak for all of Knox County teachers. Only myself, maybe a handful of my colleagues at West. That being said, I decline the governor's offer. If the governor were a friend to public educators, and if funds are indeed available, then support for teachers should be provided without strings attached. As the late, as the late Dr. Maya Angelou wisely stated, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them." While we can't change what's happened in Nashville, we can focus on the future of public education, an institution that should transcend political parties. It's time to redouble our efforts and ensure our public schools have the necessary funding, personnel, and infrastructure to succeed. And if I may humbly offer a cautionary advice, as elected public servants, you represent the entirety of your districts, all constituents, regardless of their political leanings. I urge you, please, to avoid the same inflammatory divisive rhetoric that we've seen in the highest echelons of United States government. Using terms like the Republicans, the Democrats, the right-wings, and the leftists do nothing but further divide us and alienate parts of your districts at a time when it's imperative that we work together to foster unity in defense of our public schools. Please, be willing to truly listen, not just to respond, but to understand. Please be willing to put in the work to help bridge the divides that have grown between us. Yes, our path forward just became more challenging, but if I'm certain of anything, it's that Knox County's teachers will rise to that challenge. Few, if any, professionals are more resilient than teachers. We'll show you who we are. As always, any of you are welcome in my classroom at any time.
Thank you. Carolyn Mann. Carolyn, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My foot fell asleep. I'm Caroline Mann, Knox County. I am the parent of three Knox County alumni, West High School, two of them STEM Academy, my middle kid. And I'm speaking on the legislative agenda. I've got three questions for you, kind of requests. They're about communication, and they're about overcoming at the state level, the local level, and the hyper-local level. I'd like to know, as a body, how are you going to overcome or come together to overcome the hostile legislation that was just passed this past week in Nashville? And how are you going to communicate your actions and your intentions to your constituents? My second question is how are you going to inform your constituents and keep their heads above the water of the everything that's going on? It's so hard to keep track of what's going on. I'd like to know your plans, again, for communication. How do we overcome the morass and the dismay that so many of us feel as a consequence of this recent legislative special session? And third, on a very local level, how are you going to communicate to your constituents that we should have confidence in this board when members explicitly go out of their way to advocate against it and to advocate against the institutions that you were sworn to protect and that we have entrusted to your care? How are you going to communicate, and how should we have faith in that any longer? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes Public Forum.
Thank you. Moving on to Board Forum. Ms. Elkins?
I just wanted to say how thankful I am for all of you because last week was Board Appreciation Week, so thank you all for, you know, doing time here and doing what's best for the students. This, and then this week is Counselor Appreciation Week. I really hope I don't ruin this if it was a surprise at halls, but today, we filled out these, like, little papers that said lifesavers. And honestly, school counselors are really lifesavers. I've had some terrible, terrible academic schedules that they have pulled me out of. So I'm just so thankful for our counselors and thankful for you all.
Thank you. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, once again, thank Dr. Garfield Adams and all of his team, superintendent as well, and everyone who's worked on the MLB solution. And I'd like to say to all of the parents and staff and community, regardless of how this goes, please stay involved in the process. Please continue to share your concerns. Please continue to push for what you think your students need. That's what we should, we should hear from you and expect to hear from you. So please, stay involved because this is just the beginning.
Thank you. Ms. Templeton?
It is School Counselor Week, and I have a fifth grader who likes to sign her name up and go in there and have her moment with the school counselor. And I am so thankful for the time and the patience and the awareness that those school counselors bring on the day-to-day, even as a fifth grader needs to talk about how her shoes are dirty. I appreciate that we are actively combating any stigma around mental health and how important it is for it is for each one of us to take care of ourselves as individuals so that we can be whole and focus on the work ahead of us. And I am thankful for a school system that, albeit we need more, that has a counseling program that welcomes even the youngest to their doors. So thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. Ms. Fontana Ridley?
I want to ditto what you just said. Thank you to school counselors. I know that you all have a really tough job, but you all are so important to the kids. I also want to congratulate Cedar Bluff Middle School on their grant. I just read through all the grants today, and I can appreciate, because I was a student there, and to the Bell Morris community, good job getting that grant for Bell Morris.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes, I had the opportunity to spend a little time at Bricky McLeod this week, and I got to see, appreciate Principal Hutton and Assistant Principal Adcock do a great job. But they do a house system in there with their school. I know a number of other schools do that. But a young fifth grader by the name of Oakland Edwards has given me a T-shirt and graciously allowed me to join Empatia, the House of Empathy. And so she came and greeted me and has graciously allowed me to be an honorary member, so I am grateful for that. And I'll wear this in a few weeks at Carline. On Wednesdays, they wear their T-shirts, so I'll give shouts-outs to all those that are in the House of Empathy.
I love that. That's amazing. Ms. Morgan? Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say I did spend some time at Carter High School this past week, which is great. Appreciate Mr. Killian and his team letting us come out there and take a look around. Also, I wanted to point out that Career Magnet Academy's 10-year anniversary is coming up, and that affects all of our districts. Lots of students go there. I've been there a couple of times now, and Dr. Lewis is doing a great job with those folks. Thanks.
Ms. Christie?
Yes, I just want to say that I started my week last week with our amazing South Knoxville administrators, and I ended the week with South Hill High School on Thursday and Carter on Friday, and I'm just really impressed. I know that a lot of times in the community and on social media, there can be a lot of distractions there, but, you know, inside those schools, it was business as usual with teachers and our amazing staff and students, and they're just doing the hard work every day, and I appreciate that. And also, a happy belated birthday to our amazing student rep, Sophia, who I believe had a birthday a couple of weeks ago. So happy birthday, Sophia.
Happy birthday, Sophia. I had the opportunity to go to Amherst Elementary School and judge their spelling bee, and I'm always impressed by those little kiddos and what they can do in spelling, getting up in front of adults, and, you know, it's very impressive, so I had a great time. And going to South Doyle with our CEO champions, that's one of my favorite committees, by the way, and just seeing the work that's being done in these schools to prepare these kids for the workforce. Did have to leave early because one of my kids had the flu, so I had to go into mom mode, but I really enjoyed going to South Doyle and seeing what those kids are doing. It's impressive. It's impressive. So with that, we are adjourned. See y'all Thursday.